All right, Ms. Kara.
Recording in progress.
Good morning. I'd like to call the Tuesday, April 8, 19th meeting of the San Jose County Board of Commissioners. Order please stand for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, first item on the agenda, opening reading of bids. There are none. Move on to reports and requests from the Board of Commissioners. First item is the Accounts Payable Docket. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Commissioner Dieter, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Fleming, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Castelni, how do you vote?
Aye. All right, next we move to... One of the nice things we get to do here every month is kind of recognize some people doing great things in our community. So the first person that we'll recognize this month is the business of the month from January.
Portium.
Mr... or Commissioner Dieter.
Now, sit down. Y'all next after this. We go with January because we're a little late.
Chris, you want to pop up there?
Oh, okay.
We would like to honor Armando's barber shop for the January Business of the Month. We've had some... They've been very busy cutting hair, but I appreciate Chris is down here today, and you will have up to 17 minutes to talk about your family's business that has been in the area probably before we were even born. So go ahead.
I'll give you about a minute or so. Yes, we've been in the area for about 60 years. My father has, cutting hair. And we just recently moved to LaSalle and St. Pete on, two years ago now, from Edison and Ironwood. And it's been a great move, and I really appreciate the city and everything that they do. And it's been fantastic for us, and can't wait to keep it going. And I thank you for the award, you know, putting us up for that.
Thank all of us.
And Andy, and everybody. Very much appreciated. So yeah, we look forward to keep doing good things in South Bend.
Besides Frank Fotia, have there been any other famous peoples' hair y'all have cut there?
No, Frank's about the most famous for sure, without a doubt. And you, of course.
Well, that's a given. So we have Digger, Lou Holtz, Charlie Weiss.
Yeah.
Keep going.
All the football coaches from a long time ago, Mayor Pete, you know, all the good people of South Bend.
Okay, cool. All right.
Yeah.
Well...
Well, thank you. Well, once again, it's great that we can award local businesses doing great things. Armando's a great partner in our community, so it's great that we could award that. And then Derek said we're going to get discounts on haircuts, but that's kind of cool, too. But...
Absolutely, absolutely.
Why don't you come on up? We'll get a picture.
It's not for women, right? It's just for...
All right, next up, we have Business of the Month for March. Commissioner Dieter.
Are we live? Is... are we live? It's your phone. Whatever you want to do.
Good.
So this is a very unique award besides all the ministry they do in the community and helping people out. They started a restaurant, Bishop and Bay's on Chapin Street. So stop by and get your food. So I know you can speak for hours. So just go ahead and tell everybody about what y'all do on the ministry aspect and also your restaurant.
First of all, we thank the Board of Commissioners for acknowledging us. We are from our community. We do a little bit of everything. We all... We help out with the drug and we're real... Well, I'll tell you what. The last thing we done was the expulsion program with Andre Gammich and with our prosecutor, Prosecutor Carter, making sure that everybody get a second chance. This is a second chance state, so we've been working hard on expulsion program. And during the COVID situation, we figured out there was no soul food restaurants. So in... Besides getting your license reinstated and felonies hidden behind a wall, we decided to cook some pork chops and collard greens and hot water cornbread. Yes, yes. Catfish, barbecue, whatever you need. And so right there, still in the heart of South Bend, still downtown, 301 Chapin Street. So you can always come in, and we have sit-down, big screen TV. We play a lot of Modell's Family Reunion plays on TV, so you can come down and get your... And listen, we do promise to raise your blood pressure and cholesterol up. That's what we doing now. So we're healthy on one side. On the other side, we're not healthy at all. So... But it's been a blessing to be a part. We doing anything we can to build up South Bend and to make sure this is a great place to live.
Cool. And then you also want to tell them the address of your church?
Yeah, the church is 410 South Taylor Street. Sweet Home Ministry is right next to our great baseball team. Again, downtown, really kind of downtown, heart of South Bend, where we do ministry on every level, feeding the hungry, clothing, food, whatever we can. We're servicing our community. Our doors are never locked. We're always open. We're always there servicing everybody, from our homeless all the way to our seniors and our fatherless. So we are very, very proud to be citizens of South Bend, Indiana. And regardless of what CNN... I know we had some bad CNN press about South Bend, but we are from here, and we're going to make sure that we change the mindset of what South Bend is.
Cool. And you also have the middle table reserved at Sunrise Cafe for lunch.
And I have my own table at Sunrise Cafe. It's the Bishop's Table. I'm Bishop. This is Bay. And so when I go to Sunrise Cafe, I have a table right there in the middle. And you know what? You know what, Commissioner Dieter? You can sit with me anytime you want to be at there. But now, when you come to Bishop and Bay, I have a whole... We got another Dieter table.
Do I have to pay the cover, though? Do I got to pay the cover?
Of course, of course, the cover charge.
Thank you. Okay, young lady.
Yes.
Step up there. Move them out of the way.
Well, I'd like to say thank you as well. And just to add to what Bishop has already said, we're getting ready to launch a men's closet because we were a part of a movement that has expunged over 7,000 cases in the county. And so now we want to continue that on and have them dress for success or dress for their purpose. And so we're getting ready to launch a men's closet where they'll be able to come and get attire for interviews or their business for free. So if you all would like to clean out your closets, you have an awesome suit on there, by the way.
I have several for you.
Wonderful, wonderful.
He's got a bunch of blue suits for sure he could...
A bunch of blue. That works. That works for interviews. We welcome those. So that's our new latest adventure that we're embarking on. And thank you all so much for this.
Thank you.
Well, thank you for everything you do for our community. It's great to see different organizations and people just finding needs and addressing them because it's so heartwarming to see. And thank you for all the work you're doing for making South Bend and San Joseph County a better place.
Thank you.
Thank you and best wishes.
Thank you.
Anyone else from the audience would like to say anything? 301 Chapin, former site of Nap Town Riders, by the way.
Yes, yes.
Come on up for a picture. All right, and lastly, it's my pleasure to present the March Citizen of the Month to Deborah Doral. And I think this is...
Step up.
Yeah.
Step up.
So if you've attended any county council or Board of Commissioner meeting or other meetings, Deborah is a face that you will remember. And what I appreciate most about Deborah is we don't always agree on issues.
Really?
But we always have a cordial, respectful conversation. And there are a lot of people that get up and point out the things that we might not be doing as well as they would like us to. But Deborah does it in a constructive way and a respectful way, and that interaction is very appreciated by me. So I think there is... I can't think, except for maybe Dan and Deborah, there's anyone who is more committed to making Sancho County a better place, but also does the work in order to do that. It's easy just to sit back and complain about things that are happening, but Deborah shows up and tries to impact things as best she can. So we're so thankful that we can give this award. Commissioner Dieter, anything you'd like to add?
Sure. Again, thank you for all the meetings. Thank you for all the unity gardens that you do in the community. I want to have to come out and help you when somebody is upset with stuff, which is cool. But again, like Andy alluded to, there's very few people such as yourself and Dan that come, especially all the way out on Autton or New Carlyle. So we appreciate when you make this effort to come to our meetings. I know you go to the county council meetings. I don't know if you all go to the city council. Okay, that's fine. But again, appreciate all your input and all the poetry that you enlighten us with. Thank you.
I'm glad Dan pointed out. Could be a little worried last week when we didn't see you at the meeting, but then Dan pointed out that you had something else going on. Commissioner Fleming, anything you'd like to add?
Oh, I just appreciate the things that you have read and said to us about how to do things. I appreciate it so much. Thank you for your comments and help. Thank you.
Anything you'd like to add?
Well, gosh, 17 minutes, did I hear? So I do appreciate you listening. I think that that is the place that we start to solve problems. And I know that in your busy lives, it's hard to keep listening. But we appreciate the opportunity to come and share things that are not on the agenda. And Andy, like you said, with recognizing some of the nice things you get to do, I think that the public is becoming more aware that we need to engage in a productive, constructive, and appreciative way. So that's what we're trying to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Come on up, take a picture.
Congratulations.
Moving on to equally fun things. Bill was passed by the St. Joseph County Council. At a public hearing held on April 12, 2022, council took the following action. Bill 4322 became ordinance 5122, establishing salaries for the Health Department. We could also include Bill 4922, ordinance 5222, also from the Health Department. Any questions or comments regarding these items? Is there a motion?
Hold on, just... Amy, real quickly, can you just kind of... Because for people who have not gone to the county council, it goes to them and it comes to us, just a brief synopsis for these two bills?
Yes. Amy Rupe, Administrator for the Department of Health with offices on the 8th and 9th floor of the county city building. And the one ordinance is to move a full-time nurse to part-time as we are having a difficult time attracting a full-time nurse for our clinic. But we have had interest in part-time positions. So that is moving the salary and benefits from the full-time to part-time for that ordinance. And the other ordinance is to use some TB funds that we received from the Department, Indiana Department of Health, in order to hire some help for our TB nurse.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Move for favorable recommendation?
Is that a motion?
Yes, it is.
Second.
Oh, I'll second that, too.
Commissioner Dieter, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Fleming, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Castelni, how do you vote?
Aye. Next, we have Bill 4422, ordinance 5322, establishing salaries for Superior Court. Any questions or comments? Is there a motion?
Motion to approve this ordinance number 5322 for the Superior Court.
Second.
Commissioner Dieter, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Fleming, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Castelni, how do you vote?
Aye. Next, Bill 4522, ordinance 5422 from PSAP. Any questions or comments?
Mr. Augustino, can you speak on this? Are anybody from PSAP on there?
I think this was a salary amendment to change administrative officer to make it commiserate with other folks doing the same level of work within PSAP. I believe it was passed eight to one.
I move for favorable recommendation?
I'll second that, then.
Commissioner Dieter, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Fleming, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Castelni, how do you vote?
Aye. Next, we have Bill 4722, ordinance 5522. This is changing the salary for our IT manager that we are looking to hire a new one. Questions or comments? Is there a motion?
Motion to approve this ordinance number 5522 for the IT manager.
I'll second the recommendation.
Commissioner Dieter, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Fleming, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Castelni, how do you vote?
Aye. Next, Bill 4222, ordinance 5622, the monthly transfers and appropriations. Any questions or comments? Is there a motion?
Motion to approve ordinance 56-22, which is the line for the budget transfer.
Second.
Commissioner Dieter, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Fleming, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Castelni, how do you vote?
Aye. Finally, Bill 4822, ordinance 5722. This is for Circuit and Superior Court, a technology upgrade. They had originally applied for grant funding, which they did not receive. So they're coming back to get an ARP appropriation for the remainder of those funds. Any questions or comments? Is there a motion?
Motion to approve ordinance number 5722 to update these funds.
Second.
Commissioner Dieter, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Fleming, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Castelni, how do you vote?
Aye. Moving on to the Health Department, approval to apply for grant through IDOH for funds to support immunization services.
Yes, this is a grant that we receive from the Department of Health to support our immunization efforts within our clinic.
Questions or comments? Is there a motion?
Well, a motion to approve this grant funding opportunity.
Second.
Commissioner Dieter, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Fleming, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Castelni, how do you vote?
Aye. Next, approval of contract with Tralient to provide HIPAA training for 20 new employees.
This is a continuation of a contract that the Department of Health had with Tralient for the past three years. Written into the contract was an auto renewal clause that we were not aware of. So in order to get out of the contract, since it is going to be offered internally through human resources, we reduced it down to just the new employees within the Department of Health to receive training on HIPAA through Tralient.
Any questions or comments? Is there a motion?
Motion to approve this HIPAA training for the 20 new employees.
Second.
Commissioner Dieter, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Fleming, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Castelni, how do you vote?
Aye. Next, approval of contract between San Jose County Department of Health and United States Department of Interior for their US Geological Survey Joint Funding Agreement for Water Source Investigations.
Yes, this is a yearly contract that we receive and split with the Surveyors Office through the USGS for water testing.
Questions or comments?
I have a question. What does that actually do, Amy?
Does Mark... I'm wondering if Mark Espick is in the...
He is. He is approaching the microphone now.
Thank you. He will better explain.
Good morning. So this is a... There's 30, probably about three dozen wells across the county. The USGS comes in and samples them every year. Some of them have continuous monitoring devices in there. Basically, it gives us the level of the groundwater. So we know if it's rising. In 2016, 2018, it came in pretty handy when we had all the flooding. We actually had underground flooding where the water was... The groundwater was rising up so much it flooded out a lot of basements. But through this network, we're able to document and show the water resource and what's available in the county.
Well, what's our overall grade on our water?
We have a lot.
Is it good?
The quality's good. I mean, up, you know, in the upper aquifers, we have, you know, nitrate contamination mainly from human influence. But for the most part, the water's pretty good.
So this encompasses the whole county from...
Not... That was one thing I was just emailing them last night about. I'd like to see it expanded out on the west side of the county a little more to include the, you know, the industrial park, the new energy plant. Well, I guess it's not new anymore, but that facility withdraws 10,000 gallons a minute of groundwater. So it's important to be able to measure, you know, what we have out there.
So do you have... Is there testing in Olive Township in New Carlyle area, or no?
No, not at this point.
And when would that... Because that's been the whole, I guess, part of the IEC of the water contamination, all that aquifer. Is there plans to have testing or...
Well, these wells really aren't sampled for contamination. They can be used for that, but it's mainly just to determine the water level, what the amount of resource that we have available.
Okay. So is there one plan for out there, or...
Well, that was the response I got back. There are three options. One of them would be to drill new wells. The other option would be just to take over some monitoring wells or test wells that were already drilled in the area and then turn those over to USGS.
Okay. Well, I'll get with you for follow-up on that. Thanks.
Sure.
Any other questions or comments? Is there a motion?
Motion to improve the survey joint funding agreement for the water source investigations.
Second.
Commissioner Dieter, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Fleming, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Castelni, how do you vote?
Aye. Moving on, approval of contract with All American Entertainment for the Birth Equity Conference.
Yes, this was a contract that we would like to enter into for the Birth Equity Conference that is being hosted by our HOPE unit, which is our health outreach promotion and education unit.
Any questions or comments?
Just a quick one. Can you answer the birth equity?
Hi, I'm Sally Dixon. I'm the coordinator of maternal infant health initiatives at the Health Department.
Okay. So could we get, like, explain that birth equity conference?
Sure. So birth equity, the definition of that is the assurance of conditions of optimal births for all people with a willingness to address racial, ethnic, and socioeconomic disparities. And so through our work through the fetal infant mortality review, when we review cases of infant mortality and stillbirth in the county, one of our top priorities is eliminating those disparities. The infant mortality rate for black infants is three times the rate of white infants. It had been as high as four. And so to do that, it's going to take a combination of action in policy and clinical care changes and connection from mothers and families. And so the point of our conference was to educate people about that, raise awareness, and so to, you know, gain more participants in our... We have a birth equity and justice team, a committee, an action team, working on those different activities.
Was this one of the grants that we looked into to go into certain census tracts to look into that?
So that I... That is not... You did, I believe, approve our work with the National Birth Equity Collaborative to develop a birth equity assessment on what we're doing and to help us pinpoint that, so.
Okay.
Good. Glad.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? If not, is there a motion?
Motion to approve the All American Entertainment for the Birth Equity Conference.
Second.
Commissioner Dieter, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Fleming, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Castelni, how do you vote?
Aye. Next, we have approval of lease agreement with Mishawaka Food Pantry.
Yes, and this is an agreement that we would like to enter into with the Mishawaka Food Pantry in order to lease space from them, in order to house a community health worker there.
Any questions or comments?
I just want to make a comment that that's a good idea, and I thank you so much for helping over there. Thank you.
If there are no more questions or comments, is there a motion?
A motion to approve the lease agreement with the Mishawaka Food Pantry, which I've helped a lot. Yes.
Second.
Commissioner Dieter, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Fleming, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Castelni, how do you vote?
Aye. All right, moving on to infrastructure planning and growth. First item is the consent agenda. There's an irrevocable letter of credit cashing Clover Hill Subdivision and their special event request for the American Legion Riders Post 308 Fallen Heroes Family Ride and the Beacon Health System 2022 Sunburst Races. Any questions or comments regarding any of these items?
Where's the Legion ride? Where are they going from and to, you know?
The Riders?
Sky Matters, Department of Infrastructure Planning and Growth, offices on the 7th and 11th floor. And I did not bring that document up with me.
Is that the one that goes from Osceola to North Liberty?
I think that is the one. Yes, I believe that's the one. It should have, in your packet, it should have the route in there. And I don't... I remember signing it and reading it. I just don't know it off the top of my head. But I think that is the one.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions or comments?
I recant my fir... We're going from we. It's going from Walmart on Portage to the Lincoln Way East Post.
There was... Okay, okay.
I missed telling you what they said.
I appreciate it.
No problem.
I should have brought my stuff with me.
Any other questions or comments? Is there a motion?
Motion to approve this consent agenda.
Second.
Commissioner Dieter, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Fleming, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Castelni, how do you vote?
Aye. Next, we have bid award for San Jose County Highway Annual Bid 2022 Fuels Oils Lubricants and Miscellaneous Materials.
Thank you. I did bring this stuff with me, so I do have this backup information. What this item is, is back on April 5, we received bids for six different annual bids for materials. We're bringing three forward this meeting for you to look at. The first of those three is for fuels, oils, lubricants, et cetera. We received three bids from three separate vendors, Coal Alliance LLP, Petroleum Traders Corporation, and CERI Solutions Cooperative. The way we do these bids for the materials is that we recommend that you accept all bids that were... That met all the requirements. And we then award the low bid to whoever the low bidder is. And by accepting all, we're able to use all of them. But yet, we start off with the low bidder. If they're unavailable to provide us the material service, then we move on to the next lowest on the list. This is a way that we can make sure that we are able to get the materials that we need. And so on this, we recommend accepting all bids, and we further recommend awarding Coal Alliance as the low bidder for all kindred of items, and Petroleum Traders for diesel fuel. of items, and Petroleum Traders for diesel fuel, and Ceres Solutions Cooperative for unleaded gasoline. So, we had a low, different low bidder for unleaded, different low bidder for diesel, and a different low bidder for the lubricants and so forth, so.
Awesome. Any questions or comments?
How much was the price difference from last year?
It was, from last year, we were... All I have right here are the totals from this year, not the cost per gallon.
Like, percentage going up, like 3%?
I don't know. I don't know.
Okay.
It did go up, I know that, but I can't give you a percentage.
So, it's probably not 50%, but...
Oh, it's, yeah, definitely not 50%.
Whatever, just let me, if there was a big bump in it.
Any other questions or comments?
You want us to approve all those bids, right? Those three bids?
Actually, we'll just, for the one, first one for fuels, oils, lubricants, and miscellaneous.
Well, that's what I'm saying, though, but he, the bids for the fuel orders, so all those bids that you accepted, you want us to approve those, right?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, that's what I, yeah, that's what I was thinking. Okay.
If there are no more questions, is there a motion to approve?
A motion to approve all these bid awards.
Second, a recommendation. Commissioner Dieter, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Fleming, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Castelny, how do you vote?
Aye.
Next up, bid award for St. Joseph County Highway Annual Bid 2022 Bituminous Patching Material.
Yeah, this is the same type of deal. As, if you've driven around on our roads, you've noticed we've used quite a bit of bituminous patching this year. We had three vendors, Central Paving, Milestone Construction, Reeve Riley Construction, for several different items. And the bid tabulations is attached, and the low bidder varies depending on the material and where the garage is located, where they're delivering the material. So, it's on the attached table and highlighted for you. We have reviewed this and recommend all bids be accepted so that we may purchase from the low bidder depending on availability.
Thank you. Any questions or comments?
Well, you just said, though, again, you want us to approve the, all the bids for this, right, for the potting?
Yes.
Yeah, that's what I thought. Okay.
Any other questions or comments? Is there a motion?
Motion to approve all these bid awards for the patching potholes.
Second. Commissioner Dieter, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Fleming, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Castelny, how do you vote?
Aye.
Next up, bid award for St. Joseph County Highway Annual Bid 2022 Miscellaneous Aggregates.
Yes, once again, on, this is for miscellaneous aggregates, similar to the previous two. We had two bids, and both were found to be responsive. Klink Trucking Company and Reeve Riley Construction Company submitted bids. There's a bid tabulation attached, and the bids are different based on the type of material and also where they're going to be delivered. We recommend that all bids be accepted so that we may purchase from the low bidder depending on the type of material and availability.
Questions or comments?
Well, and again, you want us to approve all those bids that you accepted. Okay.
Any other questions or comments? Is there a motion?
A motion to approve these bid awards for St. Joseph Highway Annual Miscellaneous Aggregates.
Second. Commissioner Dieter, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Fleming, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Castelny, how do you vote?
Aye.
Next, quote award, Day Road and Bush Trail Quotes to Repair Radar Feedback and Flashing Chevron.
What we, what we did is, throughout the county, we have several different locations where we have, uh, speed, speed measuring devices that will tell you your speed as you're coming up. And then also, we have a series of flashing chevrons around certain curves and certain areas of the county. And here are a couple of locations where we found that the chevrons weren't operating as intended, and neither were the speed detection devices. So, we sent out a quote to four contractors to repair those. We got two quotes back from Michiana Contracting in Pemberton Davis. Michiana Contractor was the low quote at $70,628. We've reviewed these quotes and recommend that Michiana Contractor, in the amount of $70,628, be awarded this project.
Sky, any questions or comments?
Is that the one I days, the one we went out to?
Yes.
Okay. So, is that, was that for the westbound?
It's going to be replacing all of them throughout that area. They, they're dated, and, and the cost to repair them versus, you know, so it's a matter of fixing and replacing some.
Okay. Does that, did you notify that dude?
I haven't yet.
Okay.
But I wanted to make sure we get an award, and then I'll let him know.
Okay. Yeah, let me know.
I sure, I'll copy you in.
Happy. All right. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Is there a motion?
Motion to approve this award for the Michiana Contracting.
Second. Commissioner Dieter, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Fleming, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Castelny, how do you vote?
Aye.
Next, approval of engineering services proposal as needed agreement for SJC Inc.
Yes, what we have here is similar to what we've done in the past with other local consultants. This is a contract, an agreement to provide as needed services, not to exceed $75,000. And what that does is it doesn't necessarily appropriate, put that $75,000 into specific tasks. The, when we have work that we need that these consultants would be a good fit for, we have them create a task order and submit that, and then I sign that, and then it goes towards this as needed agreement. This is a very good tool for us for when things come up that where we might not have the staff to, to get the work done in a timely manner, or in emergency situations where we need to get something done fairly quickly. So, we, I've reviewed this, and we recommend your endorsement and approval.
I appreciate, Sky, you reaching out in this manner. And a lot of times, you are, as a lot of departments, understaffed, and so, your ability to make sure the work continues to get done, and also, sometimes there's an area of expertise where you may not have. So, I think it's important that we, you know, position ourselves to act as quickly as we can. So, I appreciate you doing this. Any questions or comments? Is there a motion?
A motion to approve this engineering services proposal agreement with the SJC Incorporated.
Second. Commissioner Dieter, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Fleming, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Castelny, how do you vote?
Aye.
Next, approval of engineering services proposal as needed agreement with VS Engineering Inc.
This proposal's the same as, as the, this agreement is the same as the one that was previously provided. VS Engineering is another consultant that has the expertise and capabilities to help us on an as needed basis. And I've, and it'll work the same way with the task orders prior to any work being completed. And I have reviewed this and find that it is reasonable and meets requirements, and recommend your approval.
Questions or comments? Is there a motion?
Motion to approve, again, this engineering services proposal agreement with VS Engineering Incorporated.
Second. Commissioner Dieter, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Fleming, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Castelny, how do you vote?
Aye.
Thank you all.
And also point out that these are all companies that have ties to St. Joseph County because we want to make sure that we keep our money in the county as best we can.
Yes, sir.
And do the right thing.
Next, professional services proposal, Rock Solid Trail Contracting.
Good morning, Bill Shalio, Economic Development, part of Department of Infrastructure and Planning and Growth, with offices on the seventh and eleventh floor. Before you today is a professional services proposal from Rock Solid Trail Contracting. This is a group that has been selected to do a feasibility study and conceptual plan for the Woods of Portage Manor Mountain Trail Bike Trail Facility. This is a project that has been talked about in different forums, and it actually submitted as a ready grant application last fall during the ready grant initial application process. Asking today for your approval of this contract, $9,663, and it will be funded out of an economic development fund. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions or comments?
Sure. I'd like to thank Bill. He's been on, on this since we started over a year ago with clients from Ducom Center and elected officials and anybody else that wanted to come out. Picked up over 700 bags of trash and helped clean it up. So, we've kicked around a lot of ideas. So, these people are the top in, at least the Midwest, of designing courses, so they're going to come out. Guy was out last week when Deb and I were out there and talked to him, and they'll bring in their crew to come up with their platinum package, their middle of the road, and the economics. So, at least we have a base to see what we're going to do with the future development from the, at some point, the new Portage Manor, possible housing, possible new, and with our highway department out there. So, it's just giving us another barometer of what we'd be looking at if we went into the woods, and then see if our park department wants to be involved. If not, go in different directions. So, if Dan wants to ride a bike out there, you're more than welcome to.
Mm-hmm.
No training wheels, though. No training wheels.
Any other questions or comments? Is there a motion?
Motion to approve the Rock Solid Trail Contracting for the Portage Manor Bike Trail.
Second. Commissioner Dieter, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Fleming, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Castelny, how do you vote?
Aye.
Next, professional services proposal, parcel one, appraisal Iverson Grove.
The next two professional services proposals relate to the same piece of property located generally at 54351 Walnut Road in New Carlyle, on the New Carlyle Economic Development area. We identify this as parcel one on our acquisition list, a piece of property immediately adjacent to the Norfolk Southern Rail Corridor, just north of the St. Joe Energy Center. We're required, anytime we consider acquisition, to get two independent appraisals. So, before you today are those two independent appraisals to assess the total parcel acquisition for the 54-acre piece of property. The proposal for Iverson Grove is in the amount of $2,000. Item J is a professional service proposal from Appraisal Services in the amount of $1,800. The Redevelopment Commission has approved both of these proposals at their meeting on April 14th. Any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Are there, in fact, any questions or comments? I guess we'll handle each of these with a separate vote. So, the first one is the appraisal with Iverson Grove. Is there...
Motion to approve.
Second. Commissioner Dieter, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Fleming, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Castelny, how do you vote?
Aye.
And then, secondly, the appraisal with Appraisal Services.
Motion to approve.
Second. Commissioner Dieter, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Fleming, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Castelny, how do you vote?
Aye.
Thank you, Bill. Moving on to old business, seeing none, public comments. Are there any public comments? We'll start first with folks in the room. Deborah.
Good morning. Deborah Durell, 21677 Otten Road, South Bend. In honor of Earth Week, I would like to start off with a very well-known verse. "The Lord is my shepherd; I shall not want. He maketh me to lie down in green pastures; he leadeth me beside the still waters." This is an example of how the residents of this planet Earth have long recognized the reliance on our natural resources for both sustenance and renewal. And I always feel that every week should be Earth Week. But this is something that I think is coming to the forefront that should be recognized in a formal way by the county. We are working on the comprehensive land use plan, and in their flyer, it positions the St. Joseph River, our beautiful river and the greenery of the shoulders of the river that feeds many of our activities here. And I have rarely heard this talked about in the halls of the county. And I feel that in today's condition, that represents an imbalance of how the county tries to deal with infrastructure, tries to deal with health, tries to deal with economic development. And these things are recognized and have been recognized by the public since time immemorial, and they are recognized by all of our institutions of higher learning that all have their sustainability offices. And so, I'm very happy to hear from Mark Espic this morning on protecting our water. And I know that there are some halls in this building that do cover these kinds of things. Area Plan does some of that, MACOG does some of that, the Board of Health does some of that, even the Drainage Board. But I think the county could raise the bar on the dialogue and raise the bar, take advantage of some of the science that is happening in our institutes of higher learning. And so, with that, I have provided the Venn diagram, which I provided to the Redevelopment Commission, because it's my, it's, I've become aware that this is not being used in the county, and I do think it represents visually how to start balancing. And I would like to suggest that the county call in and recognize an expert in one, each one of these three areas on a rotating basis, possibly month-to-month, project-to-project, to start incorporating current, cutting-edge kinds of information and solutions for addressing these things to work hand-in-hand. I think that would help fill what I see as potentially an information gap as we're going forward. And so...
Ms. Durell, you're past your three minutes, but I believe you have 14 minutes reserved from your earlier comments.
Seriously? Okay. I would like to finish then...
I don't think there's any time limit for a winner of a monthly award, so.
Okay. So, I would like to finish with a poem by Wendell Berry that connects to the biblical verse from Psalm 23. "When despair for the world grows in me, and I wake in the night at the least sound, in fear of what my life and my children's lives may be, I go and lie down where the wood drake rests, in his beauty on the water, and the great heron feeds. I come into the peace of wild things who do not tax their lives with forethought of grief. I come into the presence of still water, and I feel above me the day-blind stars waiting with their light. For a time, I rest in the grace of the world, and am free." Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comments?
Good morning. Dan Caruso, 305 Compton Street, New Carlyle. I want to congratulate Deborah for the award she received today, and I want to thank you for recognizing what she does. And of course, you also recognize that there's another end to this, of somebody who tends to be critical as opposed to constructive, as a lot of her stuff is. In fact, I was wearing a shirt this week, my children recognize this. I was wearing a shirt this weekend that my youngest daughter got me for Christmas that says, "Official member of the P and M on About Everything Club." And everybody, I wear the shirt, and everybody says, "So, this is, your kids know you this way. This is the way you always are, right?" And I said, "I guess so," because everybody says it. If you say it, it's true. What I wanted to, I was at the Redevelopment Commission last week, and I just wanted to make sure, Chris Brown gave a report on Project Honeysuckle, and I just want to make sure each of the bodies understands, there still seems to be a bit of vagueness on the use of local labor, of local skilled labor, in Project Honeysuckle, the solar farm. And James Gardner, Jim Gardner from the International Union of Operators, Operating Engineers, he was there. Commissioner Castelny and Commissioner Fleming were there at the Methodist Church that day where Chris Brown put on the... where Chris Brown put on the presentation. And at the end of that meeting, and at the end of the Redevelopment Commission meeting, I don't think there is any question, there's no ambiguity. Use all local labor whenever possible. Do not bring in labor from anywhere else. We've been, our local labor has been putting in these panels for a long time. There's, there's people sitting on the bench up there right now. There's no concrete going to be used in this, so we're not even getting into that phase. We need somebody that's able to swing a sledgehammer. Use local labor, and not even when possible, use local labor, because local labor is here. If you've got to go outside the area, you go to Chicago or Milwaukee, there seems to be some concern about that. Well, is that, is that okay? They tend to be unionized, they got to pay prevailing wage wherever their labor, wherever their, their union people go. That's fine. We're not talking about, we're talking about the guy fishing off a dock in Georgia for five years and deciding he wants to come dig holes for $8 an hour. We're looking, this, this company had a, had a reput, had sort of a reputation from the plant they built in southern Indiana, which is tied in with the University of Illinois, of bringing in their labor for that project from San Diego, California. Some, I think it was Jim Gardner, Gardner that spoke up that night at the meeting and made, made us aware of that. To me, that sounds like day workers coming across with, on an extended visa. So, we don't want that. We want our local people utilized totally. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan.
Thank you.
Any other public comment from folks in the room? How about from our friends on Zoom? Hearing and seeing none, a motion to recess is in order.
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Dieter, it is now your duty to vote. Commissioner Fleming?
Aye.
Commissioner Castelni, how do you vote?
Aye. We are recessed.
Recording stopped.